That amendment, I am going to assume, I don't want to confuse anybody, but now that item two has been removed, I'm assuming item three becomes two?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to assume that item, with four being removed, that item five becomes four, correct? And item six?
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was a history major, not a math major in undergrad. Okay, so, item five becomes three, and item six becomes four. Okay? All right. Did okay on the math portion of SAT. All right. Next item on the agenda is item 5A1, and that's case number 23-015MA. Name of the applicant is Shalish Thakar, and this is a request to change the zoning designation from residential multifamily high density to general commercial acreage, .399 acres. Location, 7,008 Joy Circle, TMS number R16906-02-06. The planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have several individuals that have signed up to speak this evening, and they have signed up to speak against the project. All right, I will call two names at a time, if you would come to either mic. You will need to state your first and last name, as well as your address, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. You'll hear an alarm when the two minutes ends, and that'll be your time. First up is David Soto and Betty Grass Nickel. Eddie? Eddie? Stay right there. All right? Mr. Soto?
Thank you very much. I don't know if you can give your nod.
Hold on, someone's going to help you with your mic.
My voice carries. There you go, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Some of y'all have seen on your campaign trail or not, I've had the privilege...
Start up. First, last name.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Soto, S-O-T-O.
Address.
Excuse me, address. I'm sorry. Thank you again for correcting me. Number 11, Arcadia Cove.
All right.
All right, so, I've seen several of y'all through the campaign trail. I've had the privilege of working for Richland County for 28 and a half years, and then in that capacity, I've worked from a deputy to all the way being the commander of this area. I've seen Richland County go from good, bad, and ugly, and I've seen the beautiful part of it. I remember Mr. Manning has addressed the issue of making Decker Boulevard beautiful again. Now, you're speaking about putting another car wash into this area. Being a commander of this area of Richland County, I've seen prostitution, I've seen murders, I've seen homelessness, and I've seen more crime occur at car washes than to count. This will only, not only tax your law enforcement, will also tax fire, and it also will tax your EMS. Not only that, because of the amount of drug use, prostitution will be seen. Not only that, you also have a synagogue. They're Hasidic Jews, so they do not use any automotive during the Saturday, on their Sabbath day, to walk back forth. Needless to say, on any given day on the roadway, you'd only have maybe four or five drunks out of tagged cars. Four or five individuals will be intoxicated, either use of marijuana, which is very rampant nowadays, or alcohol. That saying, that car wash idea, putting it in there, there is not, no way feasible for individuals to come in and out of there. Not only that, you've got kids leaving Dent Middle School, you also have kids walking forth and back to school that service that area. In addition to that, our population in that area is a seasoned population. I will not use old, a seasoned population. So therefore, their driving skills have diminished somewhat. So therefore, the in and out of traffic that that car wash may bring. If you look at Decker, you also have a car wash not even a quarter mile down the road that's dilapidated, and is no longer in existence across a used-to-be club. Go a half a mile up the road, the park lane, you have another car wash. So...
That is your time, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. Betty Grass Nickel?
Grass Nickel. My name is Betty Grass Nickel. I'm at 10 Arcadia Cove. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
There you go.
And my main concern is the safety of our neighborhood. I'm sorry, the safety of our neighborhood. Most of us in Arcadia Cove are probably, you know, in our 70s and 80s, and probably maybe later, but we go up and down Decker all the time, and in and out, and we've got so much traffic already, and to put another car wash in, and having our little road of Joy Circle being inundated with all these traffics going in and out, and all the people walking around, and coming back into our little private, which we say is our little... Nobody knows about us back there hardly, so it's kind of a little getaway, but businesses keep trying to move back into our space, and for safety purposes, and just living. We've been there, I've been there for over 25 years. Some people have been there longer, and we've been fighting off new businesses coming in in that little section, only because there's no room for anymore. And if they move in there, they're going to be right into our little complex. We're not that big, we're probably the same size as what they are. There's only 34 of us units, but on emergencies, we need to have the road accessible. We don't need to have it, people walking up and down our private road, which is almost connected to that location. So I hope you understand how important it is just to keep us safe as residents. These are our homes, and I hope to stay there until I die, and most everybody does too. But if we're being forced out with all these different businesses trying to come in, making a commercial, and giving us an unsafe to live, we have no choice but to try to move to a safer place. So I don't know how else to explain it, but that's our main concern. So, thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lyle, is it Schultz?
Schultz.
Schultz. And Mr. Rodney Christian. Cristo or Christian?
Hi, I'm Lyle Schultz. I'm a resident of Point Arcadia, unit P188. Point Arcadia is a multi-unit dwelling, 100 families, condominiums, together with our neighbors across from us at Arcadia Cove, we represent 150 families. The little alley is what I call it. It's not a road. Joy Circle is not a road. It is too tiny to contain the 150 families that come and go from our dwellings every day safely. So this is a safety issue, and it must be addressed, because if you put another business there, a car wash, which we don't need, there are two car washes within a mile of this location right now. We are in dire straits. There are accidents there now. People walk and come and go, as was pointed out by the other two folks, on a weekly basis. We are a small community within a community, and safety is the biggest issue here that I wanted to address. Joy Circle will have to be made larger in order to accommodate another business, and there's no way to put the road right now. So I kindly suggest that you reconsider your recommendation, and the residents of Point Arcadia are in, respectfully submit to reject and deny this request. Thank you.
Rodney Christian, 29, Arcadia Cove. I just want to echo what my friends have said here. This is a short street. You're talking less than 75 yards long, and to add another business where it's going to encroach upon the house that's right next to it, there's no privacy, the car wash will be there, in and out all the time, it's just not feasible in that location. It's too narrow. I mean, that's a narrow little street as it is, so I don't see how it's going to work. And we oppose it completely. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Lily Herrera and Nicole Rosen.
Good evening. My name is Lily Herrera. My address, 24 Arcadia Cove, Columbia, South Carolina, 2906. So, thank you for the opportunity. My request is to please consider the safety of the residents and the pedestrians. We have the synagogue on Decker Boulevard, right in front of this gas station. There are many families using Decker Boulevard, frequently using Decker Boulevard to go to the synagogue with families with small children. So that will create a safety concern. That is my main concern. And so, yes, like the other exponents have expressed, it's such a tiny street, there is no room for more traffic. So please consider our concerns regarding safety, and the fact that the street is really not made for more traffic to... It doesn't have the capacity to have more traffic. And there are 200 families, about 200 families on the back for these two complexes, and we are disagreeing with this proposal. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicole Rosen, Point Arcadia, M is M165, so that's my unit number. So I wanted to just say that we are against this change in zoning. It's a small residential road that was designed for the residents to get to those two complexes, and then there's one private home in the back. So this would unnecessarily increase the traffic and make it into a dangerous environment. It would also increase crime, which is something that we kind of have already been dealing with, and this would just allow for more opportunities. And there is only one way in and out of those complexes, and that is this street, which is two-car width wide, and there's no extra, so if there was an emergency, they would have nowhere to go. And it would also end up decreasing our property value, which is most of the people in our complex, that's their main asset, so that would affect them as well. But the biggest thing is, I myself walk every time we need to go to Schul, to the synagogue that's right on Decker, and that was the reason why we bought that unit, was the safety of not having to cross the street or deal with a lot of traffic. So if there was to add this to it, it would change the environment immensely, and it just wouldn't add to the neighborhood at all, because the traffic is just not needed or warranted or safe. And we do have young children, as well as an aging population, that do like to walk and do spend time out there, and we've already had accidents on that street. So to increase the number of people coming in and out would not be a safe idea. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you. Vice Chair, that public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion. You recognize Ms. McBride?
Chair, I move to deny that a request to change existing zoning from residential multifamily to high density to general commercial. I would like to say that I agree with everything that the constituents have said here, and I actually went to, I actually went twice to visit the Joy Circle location to see personally and evaluate the situation. I read all the comments coming from you all, and I tell you what looks good on paper is not always reality of the situation. So again, Joy Circle would be, it would be detrimental to the community to change the zoning to general commercial. Joy Circle is a really short one-way street off of Decker Boulevard, and there are, as stated, several homes in two communities with over 200 people. But I actually went there, so it deadens, the property deadens to the front of the entrance, and you can go only, you go one way, in and out. I think that it would be detrimental to the community, it would be detrimental to the county to change this zoning, and I move that we deny the approval, and I ask for your support.
Second. Public discussion. Well, Ms. McBride, I certainly don't disagree with anything that I've heard this evening. I guess what I would probably just offer up as part of the discussion, I'm not saying which way I'm going to go, but I know I heard a lot of concern tonight about traffic in that area, and again, I don't question that, but I just wonder for many of the folk who are concerned about traffic, if they actually know what the current zoning designation is, which is residential multifamily high density. So while I know there are concerns about an uptick in traffic in the event the zoning designation was changed to general commercial, but as it's currently zoned, apartments could go there. So to me, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, I'm just saying that is as it's currently zoned. And so, I would think if traffic being a primary concern, I don't believe that denying the request would certainly assuage, you know, I guess that any angst that the residents in that area may have around traffic. I'm not saying that I support the request, I'm just saying that for those who have concerns about traffic, I'm not certain that denial tonight would allay those concerns. But you recognized?
Actually, the plot of land is so small that you couldn't, you couldn't build but one house on it. It is so small. So there's not an issue with higher residents coming in, it's that traffic issue with the commercial.
And I understand that, Mr. Robinson, as it's currently zoned, the property owner could, you know, put an apartment complex there, which in my mind would precipitate or draw more traffic than, say, a car wash. That's all I'm saying, and that's just for the folks who are listening, who actually have those, who have angst around an uptick in traffic, that's all.
Okay. And I'm thinking the land would not accommodate that, but I understand.
Yes, ma'am, that's all I'm saying. That's all. Not challenging you at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion for denial approved.
All right, next item on the agenda is item two, case number 23-023MA. Name of the applicant, Kevin Steelman. This is a request to change the zoning designation from light residential, no, I'm sorry, light industrial, rather, to residential single-family low-density, amount of acreage, 21.9 acres. Location, 111 Pine Wedge Drive, TMS number R17700-01-94, and R17700-01-14. Planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now to open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Same thing, I will call two names at a time. Everyone that has signed up to speak this evening is for the project. Kevin Steelman and Joe Henry.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity. Kevin Steelman, 120 Harborside Circle. I'm the president of Land Tech, a residential development company here in Columbia. We recently completed a development of the property immediately to the north of this property, and we've been working with the church for the past several months on a plan to utilize some residual land that they had to allow them to pay down some of their debt and pursue more ministry. And for us, we would propose a residential development with the same zoning classification as the adjacent properties to the north and the east, and we think that it would be a more compatible use than an industrial use. And the development would be annexed into the existing Willow Lake Association, and so it would be part of the existing community. So we believe that it's an appropriate request, and we just would greatly appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Joe Henry, 86 Sunset Maple Court in Blythewood. So two months ago, I spoke to you, I won't bore you with the same spiel, but I did want to talk about three things. One is that after the last meeting, we went back to our, so I live in the community, I also am a deacon at the church, so we went back to our friends in the community, our friends at the church, we asked them to bury Councilman Pugh in emails, and I believe he got a number of emails. And we also have a group of folks here tonight supporting the rezoning, so I just wanted to make it clear that we have a lot of support, both within the community and within the church, for this rezoning. The second thing I want to talk about was consistency. So as you know from the documents, this rezoning is consistent with the objectives outlined in the 2015 County Comprehensive Plan. So we feel strongly that, you know, the area that is being rezoned is a low-density area, and it's going to be kept low-density if this is passed. The area I live in happens to be medium-density, so to the east, but the area that we are proposing to rezone is a low-density area, and that's what we want to see happen. So we feel like it's a fit, not only within the community, but within the 2015 Comprehensive Plan. Thirdly, I want to talk about conflation. Last time, there were a couple of folks here who talked about traffic, the fact that there was only one access egress point in Willow Lake, which is true, but I feel like those are two separate issues. We're talking about a rezoning of fewer than 50 houses versus an issue of 20-plus years, because this development has been there the entire time with one point of access egress. I would love to see that conversation happen. If it hasn't already, it probably has, honestly, but if the council and railroad would be willing to talk about that, I don't know where we would put another one, honestly. I don't think we have the space for it. And the fact of the matter is that all of us who moved in knew that there was only one point, so...
That's your time. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, we don't want to conflict those two issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Debbie Benson and Jeff Benson.
I'm the pastor of Willow Lake Church. I live at 100 White Oak Ridge Lane in Blythewood. I've come to you all before, and basically, just to remind you that we had been approached with a warehouse and a storage unit facility that wanted to build in that area, and we didn't think it would conform to our community, and that it would hurt the value of the houses that were there. We were approached by Land Tech, the homes that would go in there would be compatible, it would probably not hurt the value, in fact, increase the value of the homes that are there, because it'll be a very nice subdivision, probably 45 to 50 homes that'll go in there. The church will keep seven acres, but we just wanted to do something that would help the community and not hurt it. We felt that a warehouse or a storage unit facility perhaps would hurt the community. So our congregation was for this, we thought it was in the best interest of our community, the Willow Lake subdivision, so we're asking you to approve the rezoning to residential.
Thank you.
Debbie Benson, 100 White Oak Ridge Lane. Yes, we live together, and I am for it, but I'm for it for kind of different reasons. I am HR at Coca-Cola, which is in Blythewood, a large employer out there, and I'm always surprised by all my applicants that come in that don't know about everything that is making the front page in Blythewood, which is Scout Motors. Scout Motors is supposedly bringing 4,000 jobs, and it is already well on its way, they've already started hiring processes. As of 6 o'clock tonight, I pulled up Zillow, do you know how many homes are for sale in the 29016 area code? 246. If there are 4,000 jobs coming to Blythewood, I think we have a great chance to be a part of that. And I have personally a great chance to employ some of these people and to minister to some of these people. So I am for it for so many other reasons, obviously because I don't want a warehouse sitting there in front of all these people's homes, but other homes would be enhanced, and we as a community would be benefited from all of this as well.
Thank you. Next is, I apologize, Bennett Kahn?
My name is Bennett Kanig. I currently live at 214 Pine Loop Drive in Blythewood in this area, and I recently started going to this church and met the wonderful people here, so I just come along to support their agenda, and like everybody else, I'd rather see a neighborhood go in there than the other option of, you know, if some, this doesn't happen, the possibility of, you know, storage facilities or garages or something. So I've seen the houses that he's put up on the other side, and they're beautiful homes, so I feel like it's going to help the neighborhood compared to hurting it than the other options, like, you know, it'd be bad, so. That's my simple little thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
That public hearing is now closed. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Pugh?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. There, that's moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize Councilman Pugh? Oh, you pulled your mic close to yourself. That's me being preemptive, I apologize. All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item three, case number 23-030M. Actually, let me stop. This is Councilwoman Barron's item, and she is not present tonight, and so at this time, I'm going to make a motion to defer item three until our next zoning public hearing, which is sometime in October, I believe. It's been moved to properly second, that's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our next item and final item on tonight's agenda is item 5A4, case number 23-036MA. Name of the applicant is Carl Gibson. The request is to change the zoning designation from rural to light industrial, amount of acreage, 2.5 acres. Location, Montgomery Lane, TMS number R18800-02-39. Planning commission recommends approval, 6-2. Staff recommends disapproval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, several tonight. We're going to start off with the four category. Linda Wellsford and James White?
I'll go first. My name's James White. I live at 3332A Leesburg Road, Columbia, South Carolina. I travel to Montgomery Lane pretty much every day for work, well, not for work, but sometimes we do go there and do landscaping. Mr. Gibson is a hard-working, honest man. He's been there for years, doing what he's doing, and honestly, the facts are, he owns the land. So I'm pretty sure all y'all take, have houses that you own, right? Correct? So what if you had a garage on that property, but every day I'm out there saying, "You can't park in your garage that you paid for. It's your property, my name's not on it, yours is." It's kind of wrong, don't you think? You own it, it's yours. Who am I outside that to say what you can do with that and what you can't? And that's all I got.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Wellsford. I live on 1325 Montgomery Lane, and when you turn off Bluff Road onto our Montgomery Lane, the property is right there. They own a good, a big section of it. It's only a small strip that this is about. I'd like to speak concerning Mr. Gibson. He is the nicest truck owner I have ever known. He's more organized than anybody I've ever seen. Everyone has a way of paying his bills that is proper, he never makes mistakes, and a lot of the city come to him for their trucks. They might complain that there's a lot of trucks, but it's a... but it's a good problem to have trucks coming in. And if his children, everybody works with him. And I can't speak any more highly of Mr. Gibson. The other thing is you could have someone in this neighborhood that is sloppy. There's junk all over the place, all up to the one, all over the place. And it would be terrible. But this is a wonderful owner. And he is... What else were they gonna say? This property is slated for a landscape, high-end landscape. But until this issue is done... And there's a church across the street, a precious church. And here is this... This needs a lot... And it needs upscale. And it's coming. But this needs to be... He needs to have this property so that the community can have buses and trucks that work and that are done well, that they're very good at what they do. So anyway, so this is what I feel like the neighbors need to be kind. We need to love each other, forgive each other if there's problems why we aren't seeing eye to eye. But just to know, we need to... We really need to get together and love each other and enjoy the prospect of having a beautiful place for the church to look at, for the...
That's your time.
Nice manum and do his job.
Thank you so much. Next is Chandler. Last name Chandler. I can't read the first part. And then Marcus Green.
How y'all doing? My name is Leonard Chandler, Jr. I stay at 3332A Leesburg Road. I'm currently in Teen Challenge. I'm an intern and a part of the lawn crew. And I've been cutting Mr. Carl's property for the past year. And he's a great guy. And I just feel like it's only right that the area in the back of his shop, that he should be able to park his truck and the space that he has. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcus Green. I stay at 3332 Leesburg Road as well. I'm also a part of the lawn care crew that works in that property. And every time I see that property, it's that line or that tape that separates it. And to me, I think like the previous singer... Excuse me. The previous speaker said, you know, it's his property. And all he needs to do is be able to park his truck, you know, in his property across that tape. Because what's happening is, I was there today, there's a truck or trucks parked along the side of the road because he's unable to make that, you know, have those trucks parked right there in the back. So if we allow that, there would be less trucks on the side of the road. It won't be blocking people coming in and out on Montgomery. It would just make things a lot easier because he has to turn those trucks around in the road sometimes. Or I've seen it. The trucks come in and out or sometimes even going to the property that's in front of it. The trucks have to use that property. So if we could just have, you know, clear that simple thing up. I mean, it's common sense, really, just to have him park the truck there. It will... It would just ease a lot of things. And that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Micah Caskey. Hope I'm reading that right. And Robbie Haygood.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Micah Caskey. I am here tonight in support of my friend Carl Gibson. My address was 146 State Street. I don't want to forget that. What we're here to do tonight is ask you to apply common sense to a problem. And to put this in context, and I don't know if staff has the ability to bring up the Google Maps like we did the planning commission, so you can see what's happening. There's two tracts of land, one of which is adjacent to Bluff Road in Montgomery. And Mr. Gibson's been operating a truck repair business there. So he can do repairs to dump trucks and 18-wheeler things of that sort. He purchased a track just, I guess that's on the east side. Forgive me. Anyway, that's what we're talking about here tonight. That land has already been cleared. There's a gate put around it to define that property. What he's seeking to do is be able to park his trucks right there on the lot. It won't have any meaningful change to the character of the area that's not already there. And we're only here because when he got the property, he started parking his trucks, and the code enforcer realized it and said, "This is a problem." And so he's gone about this process to try and fix it and apply common sense. So that's what I'm here to do tonight, is to ask you to apply common sense to this situation. I think, based on some of the testimony we heard at the planning commission stage, you'll hear some folks talk about increasing traffic in the area. The truth is, I think, what the gentleman before me just mentioned, which is that this will actually move trucks off the road. This is a repair business. The bottleneck is not... If he's got more area to park his trucks, it doesn't mean that he gets to do more work. It just means he has space to operate in. So I don't think there's any meaningful distinction or meaningful change in what would happen to traffic there other than to make it better. And so while I can understand members of the community who are frustrated that there is a business there, that ship has sailed. This area where the repair shop is was designated M1 years ago. What we're trying to do here again is bring common sense to that situation. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Robbie Haygood, 200 Carolina Street. And I worked on the same property as Mr. Carl Gibson. And bottom line is, the trucks aren't gonna stop coming because that's his business. That's what he does. And he just needs the place to park it to make his business more efficient. And I just don't see any reason why he shouldn't get that.
Thank you. Clint Gann. Logan Hunt.
Good evening. My name's Clint Gann. I live at 200 Carolina Street. I also work at AAA Utility and Construction, which shares the property with Mr. Gibson. I've known Mr. Gibson for several years now. As has been stated multiple times, this is not a traffic issue as much as it is allowing him to use space that he has already purchased. The traffic is not going anywhere. The traffic will be there. If anything, it will free up more space for the rest of the community. It is also my understanding that there is plans to extend Shop Road, which would come out onto Montgomery Lane. And that would create far more traffic than anything that Mr. Gibson could create. So I think he should be allowed to use his property as he sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Logan Hunt. My address is 3332A Leesburg Road. And I travel on Montgomery Lane just about every day for work. I'm in landscaping. I do multiple properties on Montgomery Lane, Mr. Gibson being one of them. And basically, I'm here to say the same thing that everybody else is saying. It's his land. He already owns it. He just needs the permission to basically park his trucks on his land that he already owns. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Next is Nick Morris and Travis Hopkins.
Nicholas Morris, 1311 Montgomery Lane. The way I see it, everything belongs to God anyways. I mean, it's all his. You know, I realize that, you know, he owns that land. So he should have the right to park his trucks on his land that God gave him. I mean, the things that we possess today is from God. They are blessings, you know? So I just see it like, you know, we can't take any of that stuff with us anyways. We need to focus on the things that we can take with us, like joy, love, peace. Then the world would be a better place. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Travis Hopkins. I live at 3332 Leesburg Road. And I'm just here to speak on behalf of Mr. Carl. You know, I've known him for a while. He's a great guy. And I'm familiar with his property. You know, he keeps up with it very well. And pretty much, it's very crowded there because of all the, you know, trucks and tractors that he has there. And there's this tract of land there that's empty. But from my understanding, he owns that land. So he just needs permission to park his trucks there. And I don't see why, you know, he wouldn't be able to park his trucks there because it would help out his business a lot.
Thank you. Next is Carl Gibson and Colliers Taylor.
Good afternoon. I'll go first. I'm Collier Taylor. 3127 Pine Hill Road, Columbia, South Carolina. I'm gonna approach this thing from a business point of view. The man, what we hear and everything about, I've known Carl for 35, 40 years. They had their business, it was Gibson and Quarterbum at the time, station at Taylor Brothers. We outgrew them and they outgrew us. Their two other partners retired because of social security, was doing better than what they were doing. But if you look at it, the demand is there because it's like us. We have newer trucks now, Taylor Brothers. And it's... Most of the older trucks are owned by minority contractors that they... Where they can't afford to go out and buy new trucks at 200-something dollars. So they have to maintain an older truck, which is not many people that's gonna fix them because they have to go to the dealerships at 200-something dollars an hour. You see what I'm saying? And you hear everything. Carl's a good guy. And he has 40-some... Yeah, 40-some years of experience in it. And the man states what needs to be stated, that he's so good, he's such a good person, that everybody wants to come to him. So now, he's been there four or five years. He left us, left Taylor Brothers land, property, working the business there. And if you think about it, you hear people saying, "Four or five years." It's the ideal dream. He's employing six, seven people, mechanics. He's employing his kids and teaching them the business. And everything that's he's performing is better built to Richmond County and showing that you can do it.
That is your time, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gibson.
My name is Carl Gibson, 1014 Montgomery Lane. What I'm actually here is the... My location, where I'm at, I was trying to get permission for the property I have onboard, you know? I've been operating it for like seven years. But at the same time, trying to operate what I have on hand. But the only thing I was asking, trying to ask is, if I can utilize that property, I can make the neighbors happier, you know, for us entering and exit, you know, for us equipment moving back and forth. And also to be a much safer environment for us having more room to operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Hartley Evans Kahn.
Hi, I'm Evans Kahn. My business, Evans Kahn, 1417 Pine Hill Road. I am a small business owner. I have seven trucks, and it's located on Pine Hill Road. And if it wasn't for Carl, you know, and his business, I would be out of business. Because he makes sure that whenever I have an issue with my trucks, you know, I call him up. He said, "We'll fit you in. Come on in." Because it's important for a business owner, a small business owner, to keep the trucks running. And if we got a community that's not supporting that, then what is a community? You know, my option to the community would be, maybe he can, you know, just... Hate to speak for you, Carl, but if you don't like seeing what you see over there, maybe just plant some spruce trees along the road just like you did down here at the corner Belt Line and Sharp Road with the scrapyard, you know? Make it look a little, you know, nice where you wouldn't have to look into the yard. But he's a business owner. And I wouldn't be here speaking if it wasn't for something he has done for me and supported my business. So I asked the council to support him. Support him, support his family, you know? And we can... He can continue to support the community. Because I do agree wholly with the Taylor Brothers. Repairs are expensive. Trucking companies are like the Cookie Monster. They just eat everything. So you have to be able to go where someone cares about you and your business, and not just the dollar. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Hartley. I stay at 1311 Montgomery Lane. And basically, what I'm gonna say is, what you've heard everybody else say behind me and a couple of people in front of me is, it'll be not only a betterment for his company, but a betterment for the community as well, for... Just to let him park his trucks where they need to go and to relieve some of the clutter. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Adam Johnston.
I'm Adam Johnston. I live on 3332 Leesburg Road. And Mr. Gibson is a hard-working member of the community. He's... One thing I know about him, too, everything he does is well-thought-out and organized. So I agree... I truly believe that if you could allow him to use the backside of the property, every bit of it would be organized, and it would allow him to have more room to turn around, park the vehicles, and not... Anything, it'll keep the roads from getting cluttered up much. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. All right, our next group of speakers are speaking against the project. James Davis and Susan Collins.
Hey, my name is Susan Collins, and I live at 1209 Montgomery Lane. And we have a lot of concerns about pollution and contamination of our well waters from all the runoff of the 50, 100 trucks that come and go out of this place and sit. We're not sure... I've tried to call DHEC and the county embezzlement office to find out if these permits are... If all of the hazardous waste on this property is being permitted and maintained. And I haven't gotten to the bottom of that yet. So we're very concerned about our well waters. We're not far from Westinghouse. Somebody else is gonna speak about that. We are concerned about how... We do not want to be on city water. And we're concerned about the pollution coming off that property. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
My name is James Davis. I live at 1116 Montgomery Lane. Been there about 50 years. And appreciate y'all listening to us. That property's been under problems ever since they built... That property's been under problems ever since they built, they built that property without having it zoned. They built it and it, then, uh, Bernice Scott was up here with us and we stopped it from, stopped them from putting power on it, come right back, three months later she was up there with them, got, got it zoned. Now, the water, we got a bad water problem down there. That area flooded. It is low land. I've even talked to, uh, Ms. Myers came in when they, when they bought this other property, uh, well, when David and him bought this property, and Ms. Myers told them they could not. And the council turned them down before from zoning that piece of property. And the reason was because of water circulation. The water cannot go nowhere, it just floods the whole road down there. It'll wash the whole, you can't even walk down there, road, be, whole road to be covered. The water, and they went on and backfilled it. And Myers told them, David and Ms., uh, the other one, you cannot do that. But they did it anyway. They backfilled it, cut the trees, backfilled it, and it's flooding the land down there. And that's our issue. You know, they, they blocked all the waters going across that road down there, across that property, to get off the property up here. They all made one more big mess down there. Myers knew about it, we even sent pictures to Myers. She was up, up here with the big pictures of it, how it flooded that road and how the road is deteriorating. And, and the more them trucks is on that road, the worse it gets down there. Because the road is actually a small road anyway, but it's just started deteriorating from the flooding area. And that's what we're complaining about, you know, that's one of our issues there. You know, and it shouldn't have happened, once they done it, but they done it anyway. They went on and built, filled that land in, built that property up without permission to do that. So it's been, you know, we've been dealing with it for a pretty good while, but it's a good community. We don't want to see our community ruined. We don't want a junkyard down there.
That's your time, sir. Thank you. Next is Mary Richberg and Bruce Holloman.
Thank you. My name is Mary Richberg. I live at 1120 Montgomery Lane. I have some safety issues regarding hazardous materials. At this site, there is no retention pond that has been filled in. There is not, to our knowledge, a tank that is to be used to dispose of hazardous fluids. There is no permit on that. There's also a pipe that was pre-existing that comes out to the drainage ditch beside this business on Montgomery Lane. That pipe carried excess water that the previous owner who did fabrication, he would cool the wells with water, that's it. It went into that pipe, it's just well, same as our well water. Did not create an issue. We are now seeing some green fluorescent type water coming out and going into the ditch. We would like to know what is being put out of there now? And is it being disposed of properly? I think DHEC needs to be involved in this because we all exist on well water there. You cannot undo some of the damage. And we would like to feel like our health and the area is still secure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Holloman. I live and reside and own the property at 1101 Montgomery Lane. Um, approximately 25 years ago, uh, it would take a few years, there was a leak from a gas storage tank at Joe Brooks's store out in Hopkins. Um, this contamination, it also contaminated the groundwater in Hopkins. The city of Columbia had to go in and run city water all the way through Hopkins to, to resolve this problem because these people's land was, their, their livelihood, their water was destroyed. So it had to be, we had, they had to get water from the city. Where this property is, has always been zoned as rural residential. And it was zoned that way when this man bought it. So that hasn't changed any. It's not a junkyard. We don't want a junkyard in our neighborhood. Right now, today, this morning, I counted over 20 trucks already parked on this property that's not zoned for that. And 10 of them, at least 10 of them, have been there for over a year. There's nothing that comes in and goes. These trucks have been there. There's two of them there that's parked in there that don't have hoods on them, they're not, they don't have any cover for them. And so the rain goes in them and just what, whatever kind of grease or whatever's on these trucks goes straight into the ground. And this is one of the things that causes your contamination of well water. And it's, it's an eyesore to our community. This is like, that two acres is actually a buffer between these businesses that wasn't zoned for Montgomery Lane. These businesses were zoned for Bluff Road, not Montgomery Lane. They changed that somewhere along the line. I don't know how they changed it. But, um, we just don't think it's suitable. It, it's a two acre land, piece of land now and it actually acts halfway. It was a buffer, but now it has been clear cut and filled in, but it...
That's your time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Next is Kelly Grant and Caleb Wellsford. Right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about the traffic.
If you will say your first and last name and your address, thank you.
It's the nerves. Um, Kelly Grant, I'm at 1128 Montgomery Lane, I'm one of the residents who lives on the road. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the traffic. I know that there was some comments about that earlier. Um, but at one time, this piece of property had two entrances, one on Montgomery Lane and one on Bluff Road. Since it has been bought and changed, that entrance on Bluff Road has been sealed off. It has been chained over and they're telling people to use the Montgomery Road entrance. Using the Bluff Road entrance would have allowed for the trucks to come in, turn around, park, um, not cause the traffic congestion and the issues that we're having on Montgomery Road right now. Montgomery Lane is not built for this type of traffic. It's not built for the heavy equipment that's being currently driven on there, both coming in and parking and, uh, blocking traffic as well as, once they have repaired the trucks, they're driving them up and down the road, sometimes at higher speeds, to try and make sure that they are, um, actually running in the way that they have, uh, repaired them to be. This is causing the, the excessive traffic on Montgomery Lane has caused the trap, the pipes, the big, uh, concrete pipes under the roads where the entrances are to collapse, again, causing the flooding of the roadway right there. Um, and it's, it's really, it, it is a danger when you come off of Bluff Road and turn onto Montgomery and there are tractor trailer trucks parked blocking the road where you can't get in. Um, and you can't get out. Um, and this serves hazard to both us residents who are living there as well as any emergency vehicles who might need to get down there, both fire, EMS, police. If they are parked, parked across there trying to get into that lot, they're not able to actually get around it because it is a two lane road. Two lane in and two lane, and it's just, it's a very small road. So the blocking of the Bluff Road entrance, um, if we need to have that discussion, talking about where they can actually pull in and turn around, that, that entrance is big enough for that. It was used for that when it was fabrication. There's no need to have it on Montgomery Lane. This would have caused for there to be three entrances to this business on Montgomery Lane, three places for them to come in and clog up the road. Just reopen the Bluff Road entrance if that seems to be the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do apologize. I didn't know there was two, uh, pieces of paper, so I'm on the for Carl Gibson side.
Okay, got it. So you're speaking against for four, I'm sorry. So for the project, just, you're fine? Just state your first and last name and address and go right ahead.
Okay, my name is Caleb Wellsford. I live at, uh, 1319 Montgomery Lane. Um, I just want to say that, uh, I've lived there for 12 years, um, most of my life, I'm 19. I've never seen any, um, flooding caused by this piece of property or, uh, water that's contaminated by this piece of property. Um, all he wants to do is park trucks. Um, and I've, you know, obviously there's been trucks that sit in the road because they can't get in. Um, and all he wants to do is park a truck on there. I don't see how that would cause flooding if, I mean, you know, if, if he gets this approved or not, it's still, he's still going to run his business. So the trucks are still going to be there. The only, it only helps the community to, um, to get the trucks off the road and allow, um, that it won't, it shouldn't, the flooding or any of that, I, I've lived there and I don't see any of that. Um, I don't see any of the water contamination again, like I said. But I think that it would only help the community and get the trucks off the road. And I don't see that, you know, being a part of flooding or any of that, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is David Wellsford and Christian Scriven, Scriven?
My name's David Wellsford. I live at 1319 Montgomery Lane. I signed up below my son, so I just followed his signature.
So you're for as well?
I'm for Carl Gibson as well. Carl and I bought the property together. And when we bought the property, it said M1 on the advertisement. I sold my piece and he moved from somewhere. And it wasn't until a week before we moved in where we discovered that there was four parcels and one of the parcels that we were purchasing together was zoned rural. So it was, but we had already committed to this. We'd already sold, it was, it was too late. So we moved in and so that's, it's been a struggle ever since. And it's really, if he put a fence up or something, you'd never know it was there. He has not put any dirt on the property, so the flooding is actually on down the street a little bit. There's no chance of, of any contamination. So he just needs to park his trucks there and we ask that you help us with that.
Thank you.
I'm Christian Scriven. I currently live at 332A Leesburg Road, but I've been in Hopkins for about 67 years on and off. And in the process, I've ran up and down Montgomery Lane, I work down the road right now. And for a fact, I do know that the contamination of the oil, the transmission fluid, it's all being contained and stored in buckets, five gallon drums and things of the nature and being hauled off in the proper way. And persistent pays off. This man's went through many motions to do this the right way. So I don't think you'd find any hidden things there. But I do want to say, man, it's bitterness sometimes that hold us back from seeing another person succeed in life. What he's doing is he's leaving a positive mark on young men's life, the guys that work for him and anybody that comes to him. He'll help you in any way he can. So, uh, property marker and a barrier to stop him from producing great things, I don't think it's right. I believe that this man deserves, he's bought the property, he should be able to do whatever he wants with his property. The word of God tells us to render to Caesar what is Caesar's, render to God what is God. So I say render to Mr. Carl's what is Mr. Carl's. That's just it. It's fair.
All right, thank you, sir. Next is Jerry Hauser and Ulysses Bird, Ulysses Bird?
Ulysses.
Ulysses. Thank you for giving me right, sir.
No problem.
No problem, come on down. Hey, you gotta take the other one, he, he got that one.
Uh, my name is Jerry Huser. I'm, uh, there again, I'm one of the people that signed on the wrong side.
You're, you're for four as well?
Yeah.
All right. Would you state your first and last name and address for me?
Jerry Huser, 1205 Montgomery Lane. Um, I've been working for Mr. Carl for about seven years now. Um, he disposes of his, um, waste through a 250 gallon drum. Uh, his waste antifreeze is disposed of properly. There's something leaking when it comes in, a pan is put up underneath it until it can be brought in to be repaired. There's no waste getting into the groundwater. All he's wanting to do is park trucks that needs to be repaired, park trucks that are repaired. He's got a swath of land back there to do so. Um, he keeps his place up. He's good to meet, everybody that works for him, everybody in the neighborhood, if they need something, he'll do the best to help them. You know, it, there's, there's no, no downside to him being there. You know what I'm saying? Um, I don't have a problem and I'm right there. So I don't see why anybody else have a problem. Um, that's, that's all I, I got to say.
Thank you.
I guess I'm next.
First and last name and address, please.
I'm Ulysses Bird. I live at 1018 Montgomery Lane. And Carl Gibson's property, which is, um, address is 1014, is right next to mine's. And I have some pictures here that, of course, I don't know if you can see them from here, but... What the issue is, not Mr. Carl's Gibson's, uh, type of person he is. I mean, I've spoken to Mr. Gibson. I enjoy talking to him. He's a really nice person. But that's got nothing to do with the issue here at hand. Issue at hand is the residents of this community. We have a very serious issue. One, flooding, yes, this flooding. You see, number one, I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up right there on Bluff Road. I bought this property after I got married. Matter of fact, it's 10 acre tract. It runs all the way down through to the trailer park. And half, just about halfway on my property is a ditch. And that ditch is about from, from your podium there to about where I'm, just about to this podium right here. And it's very deep. And over the years, when I bought the property, and the first time I had it cleared, it, it opened up, it kept the ditch clean. Well, that's the main ditch. Now, off from that main ditch is what you call the small ditches. And the one that's between Carl Gibson and my property was a small ditch. So that when this ditch gets overfilled, it flows out to these other smaller ditches, which leads out to the main highway, which then crosses over Bluff Road, which has a big ditch. Excuse me, a big pipe. And that's how the large flow of water that comes all the way from Joseph Wesley Road. Joseph Wesley Road is approximately, I say a mile, half a mile up Montgomery Lane. Up Montgomery Lane is like you're going up a hill, incline. And all the water from that section comes flowing down through to...
Sir, that is your time. We appreciate you. Uh, Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Public hearing is now closed. So at this time, entertain a motion.
Chair.
All right, you got a motion, Ms. English?
I, I do. I have a lot to say.
Can we do this, Ms. English? Make your motion. Hopefully it gets seconded and then you'll have the floor for discussion.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I move for denial of this request.
A second.
Second.
Move to properly second, okay? Discussion, Ms. English, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, just need to share some things and, um, the last speaker kind of spoke to this. Lower Richland has its name because it is the lower, the lower end of Richland County. And the 2015 flood, um, that area was hit the hardest and have not recovered yet. But you all know those things. Filling in the land could be the possible cause of the change in this topography. But one of the things that we are here for is a zoning hearing. And I commend staff on doing their job and citing this business for their improper use. There is a process that has to be followed. Um, and when we deny that process, we change things that we don't understand. Um, and I will speak, Gio has doing, been doing this for over 18 years. And he has a lot of wisdom, has a lot of knowledge of how things flow and how things go. And that's why we have the zoning process. And so because of that, um, and I've heard nothing negative about Mr. Mr. Carl Gibson. I've heard nothing negative from any neighbor. I just, um, at this time, I need to move, um, to deny. And maybe in a year's time, they come back, they find a better way to make this process work so that it works for the entire community. Thank you.
Is no discussion? Whoa, 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 whoa. Not in this chamber. Yeah, well, we do things in DCC in order in here. You all were heard. We had a public hearing. We listened to you. Uh, and so that's, that's just, this is how we do things here decent. We do it in DCC and in order. Any more outbursts from anyone, for or against, I will have you escorted from the chamber. Any additional discussion or questions from the body? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Motion for denial approved.
All right. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Entertain a motion.
No move.
Second?
Move to properly second, that's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we are adjourned.